Everyone, a good afternoon. Welcome to tonight's work session. The first item on the agenda tonight for the work session are to hear presentations from insurance brokers. First up will be Cobb's Allen, and we would like to ask if there are any representative from regions in the audience right now.
I'm Jim Rogen.
Hey Jim, would you mind going outside? And we're going to ask him to go outside when you make your presentation as well. And sit outside, the video is going to be turned off. We can't make you, but we just ask you politely to do that. And I think just in the sake of fairness, I don't think you're going to change your presentation, but just so that you don't have an advantage that, you know, going second that they don't have going first. Okay. All right. Bo, you want to go ahead and lead the presentation, jump right in?
Yeah, we have to. Thank you guys very much for the opportunity to come back down today. Jack, it's easier if we stand, why don't we, can we sit across from you?
Yes, absolutely.
That way we're looking at each other.
All right. I believe we were each told we'd have an hour and a half to make this presentation. And we give you two if you need it. No, I'm kidding. I think we can keep this to 15, 20 minutes. We're bound for you guys' time. As I mentioned, certainly appreciate the opportunity to come back down. See you again, I'll hand them out to you. Hand around, there you go. Do it.
Two more.
Okay, very good. We will, we will jump right in. Just by way of introduction, as a recap, I know we've had some discussions prior to this. Bo Harzfield, Cobb's Allen. Been at Cobb's Allen for 12 years. I lead our benefits practice. We are extremely active in the public agency. We miss a panel of space. And some of the information we'll share today are benchmark information, are benchmark numbers that we-
Thank you very much. Can we start over?
No.
Numbers that we have consolidated from our experience working in the sector. And I'll go through that as we move through the presentation today. Please, you guys stop us if you have any questions, and we'll make sure this is more conversational than us just preaching at you about benefits. This is Maggie Mange. To my left, I believe everybody has met, maybe with a few exceptions.
Stuff for Kevin.
Yeah, hi, how are you doing?
Maggie Mange, yes. Maggie has experience, she actually was the benefits manager at a large construction firm in Birmingham for six years prior to joining Cobb's Allen. I think that experience, her experience in working in benefits will be extremely valuable to the situation that Fairhope is in currently in considering changes to your plan design. Anything to add to that?
Nope. I've just been at Cobb's Allen almost five years. Like I said, prior to that, I was in HR and benefits on, you know, the private sector side. So really have a unique experience, I think, in managing benefits from kind of your side of things.
We work in tandem. We are consultants on medical plans, so, you know, we would be meeting with you at least quarterly discussing numbers, reviewing plan options, strategies, that kind of thing. I'll start with a year-to-year cost comparison. That is on the top of page two. One of the things we'll look at today is plan designs. Different plan designs for the city's 10-1-17 health renewal. The main problem that we are here to solve, or that we would love to work with City of Fairhope to solve, is the rising cost of healthcare. No one has been immune to that the last few years. I want your attention to these numbers here. From the 13-14 plan year, the city spent just over $3 million, $3,184,000. A high point of $3.9 million in the 15-16 plan year. Those numbers are actually projected to dip down in the current 16-17 plan year, and then we're forecasted then to pick back up about to the level they were in 17-18, back to the 15-16 level. That's about a 30, it was a 30% increase from 13-14 to 15-16, worth, you know, $800,000, give or take. And that, those costs will continue to increase. Companies, private entities like City of Fairhope hire us to help fix that exact problem. We've got a great proven track record of keeping expenses down, not just by changing plan designs, right? We're not just going to come in here and push expenses to your employees, to the city employees. They're too valuable of an asset to the city for us to come in and propose that. What we would like to do is engage participants, get them to, you know, buy in and go where we know that care can cost less, not just by cost shifting. We've got some plan designs. We'll look at that here in just a second. But main, our main objective is to work with you to solve this problem. It's illustrated on the top of this page. We've got what we call the current funding rates for the plan listed below that. As you guys know, there's no employee contribution for the single and family coverage currently for the city's plan. And we can kind of discuss how, what that might, some proposed changes to that as we go. Any questions there? Very much. The top of page three, this is where we're looking at the, our benchmark information. We've got the City of Fairhope. This is your total funding number, right? The actual employees do not participate in the premiums, but there is a funding number that works towards the budget of the plan that you set. The Baldwin County number there to the right, that is a benchmark that we have created for Baldwin County. Let's explain how we did that. This Wednesday is the Alabama Association of Public Personnel Administrators. That's the AAPPA. They have an annual conference, and we have participated in that conference the last few years. I'm actually speaking on a panel discussion Wednesday, called Problem Sharing Forum, from 8:30 to 3:30. You think this will be long today, okay? 8:30 to 3:30, talking about insurance and HR issues. As part of this, when they asked me to speak, I thought this would be a great opportunity to create a public sector benchmark for Alabama. We work with a lot of municipalities and counties, as we've said, and people are always wondering, you know, what's everybody else doing? So we took it upon ourselves to create this benchmark. We got 52 responses from public agencies. I was able to create a benchmark just for Baldwin County. So now we're going, you know, deeper than Alabama, deeper than the southern part of the state. This is actually numbers for Baldwin County. I feel like this is very important information as you guys are considering making changes. We've got your total, the total medical premiums right there for Baldwin County, the employee contributions. That's 73-20 is for single, 272-40 is for family. So as you can see, the other municipalities and Baldwin County in the area, those are about six entities that make up that benchmark. They are requiring some contribution from participants. Certainly not rare at all, you know, to ask for some kind of employee premium. Again, we're not just sitting here proposing that that's the change you make today. In fact, we've got a solution that, you know, can continue to offer $0 premiums to participants. Get to that shortly.
Those are monthly?
Those are monthly figures, yes. Thanks, Jack. The Milliman number there, that is a, that is a benchmark, that is a national public sector benchmark from Milliman Actuarial. You guys that have been in other presentations that we've given, you might remember who Milliman is. They are really the foremost authority in actuarial services for medical health plan, you know, medical plans, such as the one that Fairhope offers. Milliman, Blue Cross Blue Shield, and all the other major insurance carriers use Milliman numbers to run their renewals. Milliman has more or less a framework of, it's an actuarial guideline. They know what the average medical expense is for every man, woman, and child in every, in the first three digits of every ZIP code in the country. That's the extent of this data.
And the Milliman encompasses, that's national?
That's national, yes, sir. That is a national figure. Cobb's Allen is the broker consultant partner to Milliman Actuarial in Alabama, actually Mississippi and Louisiana as well. They do all of our actuarial forecasting. We'll come back to that. They helped us run these plan designs in a minute, but they also provide some benchmark information. Pretty telling, you can see, and this came as no surprise to us, it's such a competitive environment for employees in the Baldwin County area that the average employee contribution for single and family is below what the Milliman national average is, right? That reinforced what our assumption was, that, you know, you guys are really, need to have a competitive benefits package to recruit, retain talented employees.
Bo, I want to ask a question about that.
Yep.
Do the Baldwin County's numbers, do the Baldwin County numbers figure in Fairhope's own, is that Baldwin County less Fairhope's numbers?
Correct.
That's Baldwin County less Fairhope?
Baldwin County less Fairhope. I ran it both ways, and I thought it was kind of, your numbers were skewing the benchmark a little bit.
Right.
So yes, I pulled your numbers out of the benchmark. So that is the premium contribution. You could see it's about, you know, 13-14% for single, 20% contribution for Baldwin County for family coverage, 24% for the Milliman benchmark. The bottom part of this page is the actual plan design. This is very important. Obviously, we've been back and forth about, you know, different plan design options for the city. We've got your numbers there on the City of Fairhope side, the Baldwin County benchmark there in the center, and then the Milliman numbers on the far right. You'll notice, really what jumps out to me is the out-of-pocket maximum for the City of Fairhope's plan. And as we, as we have discussed, that is almost an artificially inflated number currently for the City of Fairhope, based on the way your plan is structured. You guys have not had anybody hit that out-of-pocket maximum, I think, in three years, even when you had a lot of large claims. No one's really hitting that number. It's one of the reasons why we're proposing for the city to reduce that out-of-pocket maximum, some of the changes that you can make. I think that'd be a great positive for the participants here, for the City of Fairhope. Any questions there as we roll through? Okay. All right.
So this next page, we, we use Milliman to really sort of model out some plans, and we won't focus too much on exactly what these benefits are, because these are sort of always a moving target. And we develop these after we sit down with our clients and we look at, what is your overall budget? What do you think employees can tolerate in terms of a plan design? And then what can they tolerate in terms of a premium? But just to show for illustrative purposes, we had three plans modeled for standalone plans, and that means just one plan. So you'll see on the far left side, we have your current plan. Then we have a proposed one, proposed two, proposed three. And then at the bottom, we have projected savings, and that is total plan cost. So if you're projected currently, or in the new plan year to spend roughly $4 million, by making any of these proposed plan design changes, the savings off the $4 million is projected at the bottom.
So that does not account for any employee contribution to the premium?
Correct. Just total plan cost.
The way, this proposed option three, that's actually the Baldwin County benchmark. You can compare that to the current, Fairhope's current plan. It's got a little less co-insurance. The out-of-pocket maximum is actually reduced substantially from your current. But the changing, if you just changed wholesale to that plan, it would reduce the plan expense by $121,000 is the way to read that.
What about the, the Milliman RX copays? Why are those lower than Baldwin County?
Yeah, good question. So yeah, that's back, that's back on page three. A lot of plans these days have gone to a $100 tier four, you know, for specialty drug tier. And Milliman's data, it's just straight reporting of the numbers. I guess the public personnel administrators across the country have not moved to that quite yet. I do think a $100 specialty drug copay is appropriate though.
And I think that you'll see that number change as the years, you know, go on. That $100 really became more popular, I would just say, last year. So it'll take some time to catch up.
That's right. So page five is continued plan options. Here, we're looking at dual option plans.
I just have one more question.
Yeah, please.
So on the, okay, so we do have 100 and then 100.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure that what was on the bottom was what Baldwin County-
And again, just, just to reiterate, you know, we would, what we do with all of our clients is sit down and really talk through, what is that budget number? You know, what can employees tolerate? And then any of these, these benefits, if you will, can be changed, you know, sliced and diced any which way that really works for not only the city, but also for the employees and their families.
Yeah, let me add to that. There's no magic plan design that somebody's going to walk in here and show you that's going to, you know, peel your eyes back, okay? How we do this is through a process, sitting down with you guys, with your finance director, with your HR team, setting a budget, discussing what type of premiums, you know, would we like, you know, to set, then looking at the plan design and making that fit. We, with Milliman's help, have the ability to run renewals as early as literally 11 months in advance of the plan year. We came out here, I think it was March or April, and had a renewal ready for 10-1-17. That's a good example of how early we can, we can forecast numbers for the coming plan year. City of Orange Beach, we've kind of run through something with them that is different, but similar to where Fairhope is today. They've got a plan that they have considered making changes to. They hired us about this time last year to help them weigh their options, right? They ended up not making any changes for 1-1-17, and we presented their January 1st, 2018 renewal, the third week of February in 2017. And we did that with Milliman's help.
I'm laughing. You're talking about how early you can get them, and I've always worried about how late we can get them.
Also a starting point for, you know, it's really a starting point, because as the months go on, that number's going to change a bit based on claims. But it's a great way to go ahead and plan in advance. And that's, I mean, it's taken us probably 10 iterations-
So what we do is, we sat down, we sat down and tried to develop a goal, a target. We knew their budget going into the next plan year. And then we went back to Milliman and developed some plan options. And it really takes that discussion, that conversation, us consulting with them to find out what it is they want. We could pull any plan design together that they need, that fits, that strikes the balance of plan design, funding, and the budget, right? It's a very fluid process. We've probably done 10 to 12 iterations with City of Orange Beach. Having an actuary that is the best-in-class, like Milliman Actuarial, which we are proposing to provide to City of Fairhope at no additional cost to the city. Without that, it's a very clunky process that can take weeks and even a month to get each different change back, okay? So especially given the process here for a public administration entity. For a commercial operation, it's easy just to make a decision, that's what you go with. Here, there's usually going to be a vote. So we work there with their finance director and their HR team to develop the options. We present that back to the council, their finance committee, and then ultimately to the mayor to make the decision. But after it's been tried and true and tested with different options and the process. So again, all this to, you know, illustrate, the plan design piece, we're not going to walk in here with that magic plan design today that's going to wow you. That is more of a process that we work with the client to develop, make sure that we're checking all the boxes, okay? That said, on page five, something that we do think would be attractive, and we have had success with other similar groups in a similar situation, is if we have, if we're in a budget position where we need to ask employees to contribute to the premium, then we create a dual option plan and have a plan design that is close to the current plan. And that, this is, I'm right here. On this dual option plan, this one here, it would be the high option, which would closely mirror the plan that Fairhope offers today. In fact, it's got a lower out-of-pocket maximum. And then we have a higher deductible option that we can continue to offer at no cost to participants. I think that that creates a lot less disruption in a situation like this where you have not ever required premiums of your employees. That's our job, is to, you know, work within the budget constraints and create as little disruption on your employees as possible.
On these dual plans, both of them have an option for free.
Correct.
And so it's the one on the-
On the right side, in both options. Yes, ma'am. And the projected savings number, again, that does not, that does not assume any employee contributions. If you remember the first time we looked at this, we had about, I think, a $700,000 savings number? At certain participation numbers, if you ask for employee premiums, we can save a big number. It depends on participation between the two and what that premium becomes. And again, that's more conversational, where we're working with you guys determining what that needs to be, okay? Okay. Page six is one last, you know, dual option plan. That is actually the Fairhope, I'm sorry, the Baldwin County benchmark right there, that 400, 1,200 plan, 90% co-insurance. That's why that looks familiar. And then again, a higher deductible plan. Our experience has been, people focus primarily on the premium, you know, participants, that's their primary question. And I think that we could really hit a lot of goals, accomplish a lot of goals, and, you know, budgetary for the city, and continuing to offer a plan that is very low cost, if not entirely free, for participants.
Okay. On these plans, the first, where are the premiums? If, we know it won't be any monthly fee if a city employee chooses to continue a free plan?
Sure.
And that's for family also?
Correct.
Okay, that's important. And then if you wanted to pay for even a more premium?
Yep.
Okay, where are the monthly fees for that?
We don't, we don't even have them in here.
Okay.
That's something that, you know, we could have modeled out a bunch of different options. And really, it's something that, and I hate to sound like a broken record, we would come up, working together with the city to determine what that optimal level is. I think that when we looked at this previously, I think it was around $50 for single coverage and around maybe, maybe 85 for family.
And that's to get a better insurance package than we currently have?
Yes.
And it also plays into what the budget is that the city wants to set. You know, what you guys want to set is your budget. And then we sort of back into, based on participation in the plan that is theoretically going to cost some money.
The important thing is, is there is a free option comparable to what we have now, then there's even a more premium option that you can get better?
Yep.
Right.
A lot, in a lot of cases, we call that the buy-up plan.
Buy-up, okay.
Right, yep. You know, people, you can call it the gold plan, something like that, but that's correct. Any questions on the plan options, or what the process is to model these out with Milliman and anything like that?
I have one, Bo. If we wanted to allow our current employees to stay with the plan that we currently offer, and then have, let's call it a dual option that's not shown here, and then have another plan for new employees only, you can tailor that, right? That's all legal?
Absolutely.
Here's, you know, my, I guess, one issue that I have with even if we do change, and you offer a no-cost plan, the employee is still going to be coming out of pocket 20% on a lot of things, where they're coming out nothing if they're in-network. So that's a cost to the employee, and 80 or 90%. They'd be coming out 10 or 20%.
Right.
Whereas now, they don't come out any. And-
They pay a copay, I guess, currently. It would be more expensive than employees.
It would be more expensive, which to me is, is a pay cut for them.
Sure.
And so I, I would, just, the option is there to, if we ask to-
Grandfather, current employees.
Grandfather, current employees.
Yep.
You know, future employees would be aware of that, but, you know, what they're getting into. But current employees, to me, I'm not sure that they signed up to get a pay cut.
And, and also, just in my experience, if you're, from being on the other side of this, more like your side, if you're going to make a change like that, a lot of times it's better to sort of do that further out than we are from your renewal, your coming-up renewal. Because you really want to take the time to educate employees, their families, you know, it's a family decision, and educate them on what a change in insurance would be. Even if it is an option, you know, what are those options? How is that going to affect me and my family? And so we're not necessarily saying that you do this for your upcoming renewal, but just to show and illustrate that this is the way that we work in conjunction with our clients in terms of strategies and planning.
So if I wanted to say a dual plan option four, and use the, the left-hand side of that would look like our current, with our out-of-pocket maximum, maybe numbers changing to something that's reasonable. And then the right-hand side of that plan looking like the Baldwin County benchmark plan, for instance.
Yeah.
Totally doable, right?
You could essentially take dual option three, offer the left side for free to existing employees grandfathered in, and then charge a premium for new employees that want, I mean, for new employees.
Oh, triple option.
And then the third option would be free for new people, just with a-
It's a dual option only for new employees.
Right.
Sure. And everybody else would be grandfathered in-
True, because I mean, obviously, you have-
Premium level of that, with no, absolutely, no premium.
We can go Tom Osborne, triple option.
Yeah, we can go back and forth, just to show how each, you know, participation in each one is going to affect a lot of mine.
And honestly, guys, that type of conversation, exactly what we would like to have with you, and, you know, to give us some direction on what to run for you. And that's why we've encouraged, I think, the process where we are now. You guys choose a broker, a consultant, and let that broker or consultant go work and chase down all these different options for you. You can go blind looking at plan options for multiple people, and I think that's really what behooves the city, is to make that choice first and let that, let that consultant be the quarterback there.
Okay.
But yes, Jack, and another thing you can do, which I know we've talked about in the past, you could have premiums based on income, right?
Yep.
So you could have lower premiums paid or offered to lower-income participants. More or less reverse discrimination. All of that is in bounds.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me of that, too.
Yeah. And, yeah, one of the, one of the ways that we are able to, and now, I guess, where we're going in this part of the presentation on slide seven, is additional benefits and services that are provided by Cobb's Allen. And this is really where we differentiate ourselves as a consultant. These are true value-added programs from Cobb's Allen. We have an attorney on staff to provide compliance support to our clients. When we're looking at reverse discrimination plans, or leaving the current option for current employees and offering two new plans to new employees, that's, that creates a compliance consideration, that we have an attorney on staff to, literally sits right across from me. It's a little scary at times to have an attorney that close. Jay, no offense. But it really does help to be able to go across the hall and ask questions of an attorney, make sure that what we're doing meets the smell test from, and there's no billable hours for that, there's nothing like that. She was a full-time employee of Cobb's Allen, and any time that we run into a situation where we feel like we need an attorney to bless what we're looking at here, we go straight to her.
So a reverse discrimination option would probably be based on percentage, it would have to be based on a percentage of income, right?
Yeah, could be, a range, yep.
Because if you do ranges and you're one penny over that range, well, you get penalized, so.
We'd have to set that range at the high end, yeah.
Yeah, if you do a percentage, it's totally fair across the board.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. That's right. So on the compliance side, you know, anything beyond, doesn't, it's not just healthcare, she's there for all healthcare reform assistance, which I think is, who knows what's going to happen with that with the current administration in Washington, with the repeal in her place or whatever may happen next. We're here to provide, you know, guidance to our clients, you know, as soon as that hits the wires, okay?
And one thing we've seen is a uptick in DOL audits, which a lot of people don't really think about. It's not at the top of your mind, but we've seen an uptick in that. The DOL has hired some more people to really go out and attack that. And so that's one way that we've been helping a lot of our clients, really in the past six months especially, is making sure that your RAB documents are up to date, that they say what they're supposed to say, that should the DOL come in, there's, there's no problem there.
Okay. All right, HR.
Sure. The next piece is HR services. And this, again, kind of my personal opinion, just because I came from the other side, but this is, to me, a very, very valuable piece of what we do. Most companies, public entities, do not have very robust HR staff. And what we like to say is, our team is really an extension of your HR staff. So instead of picking up the phone and calling your attorney, we want you to call us first. Any kind of, you know, sticky situation, give us a call. We also have employment attorneys on retainer that we can reach out to on your behalf. Again, not charged back to you. So any kind of HR, I guess, help desk is the way that we say it, but anything HR-related, call our team first. Another thing that they do that I think is really important is training. So training for supervisors. You know, you have people out in the field, and they let, you know, one of, one of the employees just be off for a couple of days. And then that becomes an HR issue when there's not appropriate leave policies followed. So our team will come down here, train supervisors, they could do it web-based, you know, in person, and I think that's a pretty important piece of what we do.
Baldwin County has used a lot of our HR services the past 18 months or so. Our team gets down here in person, meets with their supervisors, their managers, trains them, you know, if it's supervisor harassment training, these type of things you need to do every so often. do every so often. Another big piece of this, too, Jack, you mentioned compensation, right? The first bullet point there is a compensation benchmark. You know, we subscribe to a very popular compensation benchmark database, and we can provide reports so you understand, you know, what the average compensation is based on any number of criteria that we plug into it, right? So that we're balancing the benefit side and also the compensation side. And that together creates a total compensation picture, so that we know, we got the benefit side, we got the benchmark data for the plan design, the employee contributions, we can also look at the salary side as well.
Really? So this compensation benchmark data, that's kind of like the comp study that we do? I mean.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure.
Because we have to have one for 2018, and that's just seeing what, like municipalities have for this job, based on this job description.
That's right.
Yes, and it's real-time. This is real-time data.
I mean.
Which is very hard to get.
Don't tell them we have a budget for them.
I won't. But I will say that since we only do it once every four years or so, this would be an enormous benefit.
We have had clients that have canceled their subscriptions to services like this, or have, you know, basically, we provide, again, this is a value-add for us, we provide this at no cost, and yet we certainly could take that on. Okay, so that's our HR thing. Guys, this is a great service when you have a lean HR department, which is typically the case in public agencies. So, yeah, we really do want to be an extension there, a help desk, but also get down and, like, review handbooks and all these, you know, big-picture projects, sometimes just sit on the end of a desk, and our team is great, and understands the space very well. Okay?
Right.
Okay. Employee communication, big fans of making sure that participants appreciate and understand the value of your benefits package. You guys, City of Fairhope, spends a lot of money relative to your peer group on your benefits package, and if employees don't understand and appreciate that, which I do, I get the sense down here that they do, but then we say, you're not getting your return on investment. We have a sample, what we call Benefit Guide. We create these, and, let you pass some of those down. And we distribute these in advance of open enrollment, and it's just a nice, here you go, Jack, kind of glossy, finished, comprehensive package to have all of your employee benefits. It's great prior to open enrollment. We have a lot of groups that will use these for new hires when they come through and it's a prospective, you know, job candidate, you know, really kind of make your benefits package pop, for lack of a better term. And I think that this, you know, I don't really know what you guys have used to communicate your benefits in the past, but a lot of times, this is an improvement of what you've done. We create these with input from the client, and we print, ship, whatever needs to do. A lot of times, these need to go to homes, make sure that both, you know, sets, you know, husband and a wife can see what the benefit offerings are. We will also do benefit statements, you want to touch on that?
Yeah, so benefit statements is really, really a total compensation statement. So basically, so employees can see not only what you guys are giving them in salary, but also you can add in vacation, PTO, you know, what you're paying for their benefits. And it really gives them, I mean, like I said, they are obviously appreciative of what you all do, but it really, you know, it shows them not only just what their salary is, but what you guys are contributing totality. And I think a lot of times, well, especially if you make a change on your benefits, and you, you know, offer a dual-option plan, and employees are potentially going to pay more for the plan that they want, then I think it's really important if you can provide a total compensation statement that shows what all is being done on their behalf.
That can include, you know, paid leave time, 457, I guess, in your case, contributions, or contributions to the state plan. All things considered, it really gives them a total picture of their comp.
And I'll say, back in my former life, I had to make the same decision. We had free insurance for everyone, couldn't sustain that anymore, introduced a dual-option plan, very similar to what you all are facing, and for the first time ever, did total compensation statements, because we felt like, you know, for so long, nobody, or people didn't really understand what all was being contributed on their behalf, and it was just a nice thing to give them when we were asking them to potentially pay more. So, and it went over very, very well.
Tap into Maggie's experience there. Okay, if no questions there, I'll move on here for the second time. The last two pages really just kind of sum this up, and what we're calling opportunities, what we feel like might be good ideas for the city. Again, we want to have more conversations with you guys, set some goals and some targets. I do think, it sounds like, that offering a zero-premium health plan into the next plan year, whether that's for grandfathered employees, or new hires, or both, I think we can accomplish that goal, and do it within the budget constraint, you know, whatever that may be for the next plan year. We looked at your plan expense, we really did a deep analytic dive, if you remember from our first conversation, about what's driving the cost of this plan. And what we found in that was that only one-third of the participants are getting a preventive screen every year. And we feel like that the claim report, the large claims, you could see that there's a lack of preventive care apparent within the large claims. A lot of cancer diagnoses, heart-related problems, maybe, you know, some of it behavior-driven. We feel like incentivizing preventive care, either through some kind of a premium incentive. Baldwin County last year did a drive, basically said, your premiums will remain the same if you just come by and get a free wellness screen. We have a vendor that we have spoken to that will come by in a very low cost to the city, provide the same type of service as they did to Baldwin County. It's a great way for each employee to come through, get a cholesterol, blood pressure, height, weights, do a finger stick, they'll do the cholesterol reading, and then you sit down and have a consultation with a nurse immediately after. And almost 100% of the time, Maggie and I have done a lot of this type of program for clients, we will find participants that are extremely at risk for a heart attack or stroke, and that are put in the back of an ambulance and rushed to the hospital. A lot of people, unfortunately, still today, do not go and get that physical, that preventive screen done every year. Feel like that's an opportunity. And then encouraging participants to utilize low-cost providers, we gave you a couple of examples here. This is how we want to, this is one of the ways, we want to make an impact to your spend without pushing cost down to participants. This is a way to really flatten that trend line, reduce that 25% annual increase number. I hate to keep going back to Baldwin County, but I think it's a pretty good example. Their cost, this year relative to last year, we've worked with them now for 18 months, are 0.1% higher this year to last year, more or less almost exactly flat, through a number of different programs I point to and say is the reason why. But we feel like that same, we could accomplish the same thing here with Fairhope, again, without just cost sharing, okay? And you can see here, the numbers are shocking, the difference in cost between facilities for the exact same service. And in a lot of cases, it's counterintuitive with healthcare, facility C has got a higher quality rating than facility A. In a lot of cases, with healthcare, facilities, you know, hospitals that perform a service more often and are specialized in that, do it at a lower cost. Our job is to uncover where those opportunities are, encourage participants to use those providers, and even, you know, get to the point where we can have conversations directly with those service providers and say, look, we've got 350 plan participants here in Fairhope, can we work out a deal where if we encourage everybody to come, you know, see you guys, can we do this at a lower cost, something like that? That's a better benefit, lower cost to employees, lower cost to the plan.
What exactly does it mean when you say, "I want to encourage"?
Sure. Make participants aware, I mean, really encourage, I mean, any number of things.
Do they still have a choice, or they can go where you tell them, or how's this work?
Always would have a choice, yes, sir. You could encourage them just by saying, you know, look, if you go to where we know the cost is going to be less and the quality's going to be higher, anything from your name enters into a raffle to win something, to you pay a lower cost share, right? You incentivize them with a lower copay, lower deductible for that service, something like that. But yes, of course.
There have been those that have said, "Go to this, or pay the difference yourself."
And it's very easy to do when you have a higher deductible plan.
I'm sorry?
It's very easy to do when you have a higher deductible plan, because the employees or the family members have to pay the first dollar. So hit the button right off the bat.
Last question. Why Cobb's Allen? I got real creative with the title of this one, guys, as you can see. I just kind of wanted to rehash this for you, knowing that we're trying to get out of your way here pretty quickly today. Access to benchmark data, you know, really drill down into the area where you're competing for employees, firsthand experience managing the same situation that Fairhope's currently in. Maggie's being humble about the work that she did, you know, when she was, before she came to Cobb's Allen. I really think, you guys don't have a benefits manager, I don't believe. We can be that outsourced benefits manager for you. Maggie has been through the same situation, I have as well, just on the consultant side, not actually on the employer perspective. So we kind of have a unique view of what to do. You can learn from what Maggie did when she went through this, and I think she did it pretty successfully. Reversing trends, I mean, at the end of the day, we feel like that's primarily why we get hired, is to help you keep your costs down. Early renewal process, really getting started, early forecasting, we can do a five-year budget, now that's really helpful as you go into, end of a fiscal year sometimes, to really see what kind of trajectory your health plan is on. Provide value with additional services. Again, that HR compliance, communication piece with these Benefit Guides, Benefit Statement, all that's included with us, okay? We're not proposing to charge Fairhope a dime more than what you're currently paying now. And really, I encourage people to consider this, is what kind of return on investment are you getting for the dollars that you're currently paying to a broker or consultant? What are you getting for that commission? Again, all of this, like we're talking today, is included with Cobb's Allen. Holistic benefit consulting, italicized consulting there, really just to show off my PowerPoint skills. But also, you know, to, I think that that's what we do. It's not, we're not just here to sell you a policy, right? We want to work with you, establish a three-year plan, strategy, everything that we're proposing to do would work towards that strategy. We don't just do health insurance, life, disability, dental, vision, all these things that you offer. Our job is to make sure they all fit together into one kind of holistic benefits package for the benefit and advancement of the city and its employees. All right, last piece of this, I know that the stop-loss really, what the stop-loss is for us, again, we're talking about doing all this for you, the stop-loss is the way we get paid, okay? And that's really, and we're very transparent about that, all that is, is a consulting fee for us. We provide all the services for that commission. We know that the stop-loss being up for renewal as it is, we have not gone out to market fully on the stop-loss, all right? We had a carrier partner of ours, when we were looking at all these plan modeling, they said, hey, it's actually the same carrier that writes Baldwin County and City of Orange Beach for us. They said, hey, look, we really want to kind of help you guys build your practice down here, and they have an offer on the table that is 3% below your current rates without any lasers.
You can guarantee that.
Mm-hmm.
That's a big deal. This last bullet in the entire presentation is a huge deal.
Yeah.
Got the quote right here for you.
So you can, and how many years would that be?
It's a one-year offer.
One-year offer?
Yes, sir. It's a one-year offer. And honestly, with, I know you have a third year on the table with your current provider, right? And our experience with stop-loss, I know you guys have bid this out competitively the last few years, when you allow one broker to represent you, I really feel like you get a better response from the market. And I've gotten, you know, I've got evidence of this from stop-loss carriers that we work with, and that have quoted on this case the last few years. They get more aggressive when you've got one broker out there soliciting proposals. It's less muddy, water's less muddy, that's what I'm trying to say, and they'll get more aggressive. So this is a proposal that we've got from one of our top carriers. We did not go out to market all the way yet, and I didn't think that was appropriate to do, but I'm not sure that we'd be able to beat this anyway.
And you say, "Without lasers," does that mean zero lasers, or without any new lasers?
Zero.
Zero.
And the deductible would be the same as what we currently have?
Yes, sir. I've got it here for you, and I'm going to leave with you, Jack.
I'd love to. I'd love to see that.
It is the same plan you currently have, no lasers, 3% less cost. And I believe your plan, currently the third year that you're entering into, steps up by 8% or something close to that. So, once you factor that in, it's about 11% below that, but yeah, certainly less than what you're currently doing.
Do you, councilmembers, mayor, do you have any questions about it? Everybody knows what the lasers have been sufficiently explained, right?
Yes.
Okay. And how good is that? I mean, you just have their word on that, or how?
En route.
Okay. Can we leave that with?
Yeah, I certainly will. Yeah, you guys currently have a $70,000 specific deductible, yep. We've got that down here, the projected total premium is 567. I think you're currently, you know, around 585. The participation number that you use could change that, but you can look at the rates here, which I'll circle for you. And, yep, it is a firm proposal, this was underwritten based on June claims data, I'm sorry, May claims data. June is available now, and we have not received that yet, don't need to, you could bind this policy today.
That's one option, and then, but then, if you were made agent of record, you could go out and shop the market for others as well, you know, like a multi-year.
Absolutely, yeah. And we got this done without any competitive data at all. And yes, we would plan to, you know, hit the market and, you know, go obtain other competitive proposals, potentially gain multi-year proposals, and use this to leverage other proposals down. Yes, sir.
We need to keep, we've been about, ooh, about 45 minutes, so. Give the other people a chance.
Yep.
Any questions?
Thank you, guys, very much. We appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you all.
Jack.
I think he's extra, yeah. And I don't think you have to leave if you want to stick around.
No. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Could have told me, Jay, I was about to ball over that microphone. You're doing that on purpose? [laughter]
Well, since you're back there, could you send in the gentleman from Regions?
Let me just grab my things, guys.
Yeah.
That's right. [inaudible]
Jim, you can come by the way if you'd like.
Yeah, please. Thank you so much. Please, yeah, I'm going to, let me just get myself a copy, and if you can just take this one. [inaudible]
No, I'm 40 minutes old.
We have three main documents I want to go through. There's two actual different bound ones, one's thicker than the other, so there's actually five separate. So those are just, if we get a chance to go through those, I'd like to, but the main thing I want to focus on is, is a little bit about my background in that of Regions Insurance before we get started, and then go into just the experience for the last five, six years. I want to talk about the renewal and plan design, and then we can go from there. Before I get started, do you guys have any questions whatsoever? I want to start by saying thank you for your time, council and mayor, and a little bit of background about myself before we get started. I'm almost into this industry for 30 years, so it's been my life's passion, it's all I've done. I graduated with a degree in statistics and math from the University of Georgia, was recruited by, at the time, Anthem, which is the largest Blue Cross plan in the country. Worked for those guys for about six years. After that, I went to work for Marsh and McLennan, which is the largest broker in the country. And shortly after that period, I started my own consulting firm. Had, by the time we were purchased by Regions, we had a staff of only six people, but we handled a tremendous amount of business at that point, and that was a little over three years ago. So again, that's a span of almost 30 years in the industry. A little bit about Regions, and then we can get into your experience and that sort of thing. Regions is one of the top brokers in the country, we're a top 20 broker, we're only in 16 states where we actually have offices, but we handle insurance throughout the whole entire country. Again, that's, anywhere we would have a bank location, we would also have a brokerage location. I want to get into, there's a tremendous amount of services I want to talk about, but I'm going to get to that towards the end of the presentation. The first thing I kind of want to go through with you guys, and I'm not sure what kind of time restraint I have, so can y'all tell me that before?
We'll give you 45 minutes, just like the others have.
Okay. by, at the time, Anthem, which is the largest Blue Cross plan in the country. Worked for those guys for about six years. After that, I went to work for Marsh and McLennan, which is the largest broker in the country. And shortly after that period, I started my own consulting firm. Had, by the time we were purchased by Regions, we had a staff of only six people, but we handled a tremendous amount of business at that point, and that was a little over three years ago. So again, that's a span of almost 30 years in the industry. A little bit about Regions, and then we can get into your experience and that sort of thing. Regions is one of the top brokers in the country. We're a top 20 broker. We're only in 16 states where we actually have offices, but we handle insurance throughout the whole entire country. Again, that's, anywhere we would have a bank location, we would also have a brokerage location. I want to get into, there's a tremendous amount of services I want to talk about, but I'm going to get to that towards the end of the presentation. The first thing I kind of want to go through with you guys, and I'm not sure what kind of time restraint I have, so can y'all tell me that before?
We'll give you 45 minutes, just like the others have.
Okay. Perfect. So I did not know how pushed I was.
If we can do it sooner, that'd be great, but if not, we have, in all fairness.
Sure. Okay, thank you so much, Jack. The first thing I want to talk about is the actual experience you guys have had since you've been self-insured. There's a two-page handout, which at the top would just say, it's real simple, it says City of Faroe. On the left-hand side would be the years, the plan design years from 2012, 13, all the way through present, 2016, 17.
Which one is that, Jim? Is this?
It's this one here, Jack.
Okay.
Yep. Just a little two-page one.
I got you.
Okay. What's important, I think, to point out here is, we started with funding rates, so, and I'm sorry, there's going to be quite a few numbers and so forth, and everything I talk about, obviously, that's the course of what we handle. But I'm trying to make it as simple as possible, you know, one- and two-page type handouts. But what you're seeing, first off, are those are the funding rates that we put in place in 2012, 13, and it was a $548 single rate and $1,229 family rate. You will see the enrollments, and that's the annual enrollment for the year, so you'd have to draw those numbers by 12 to get what your monthly average enrollment would be. The budgeted rate, meaning if you take that funding rate and multiply it out by this enrollment, you would get that budget of $3,500,000. The actual cost that year was $2,900,000, so a savings of roughly 600 grand first year being self-insured. And if you would've stayed fully insured with Blue Cross that year, the cost would've been $3,396,000. So that is the exact same format throughout the rest of this spreadsheet. So, 2000, and again, so you guys, for y'all that you guys haven't heard my presentation potentially in the past, is I am actually the one who develops all the funding rates for you guys. They're actuarially sound, and I can go into that if you need some definition of what that is exactly. But ultimately, it just, it's ACA compliant rates, so you can put those on your 1095s. Anyway, actuarially, they're a sound rate to go forward with. So the next year, we reduced the rates because you had such a good experience the first year, at $474 and $1165. The budget was $3,400,000. Again, the cost was just a little over, a little less than $3 million, and the fully insured that year would've been $3,400,000. So another savings of roughly $500,000. And as we progress through the rest of this presentation, you come to the bottom, the grand totals, the budget was $16 million over that period of five years, with the actual cost being $14,455. And the fully insured, and it's real important to point this out, at $6 million, $16,52,000, that's assuming there was no Blue Cross rate increase for that five-year period, which the average rate increase or Blue Cross's published trend for that period of time was 8.5%. So trend is medical inflation, means the same thing. We were seeing increases on fully insured business anywhere from 8% to 10% all the way up to about 35% over this period of time. And again, assuming you did not get a rate increase, which would've been kind of tough, could've happened, but more than likely, you would've gotten rate increases over that period of time with Blue Cross. Assuming you didn't have one, you still saved a million and a half dollars over that period of time, being self-insured. I think that is a great credit to our team, and I just want to make sure you guys understand the work that we did to get us to this point. Flipping over to the second page of this, we have come up with a couple plan design options. This is something that we, it's very common for us to do. Every renewal with most every group we do, unless they specifically tell us they do not want to see plan design options or a second or third plan, then we're going to offer plan design changes. And we actually go to great lengths to take your personal data as opposed to the data of Blue Cross or another large-type consulting firm that would actually give us trends and that sort of thing on what it costs to increase or decrease copays and deductibles and that sort of thing. We actually do it in-house, and again, I'm the one that typically does that, although we have other folks that help us, but I typically am the one that does it. So currently, the base rate that you guys have for your current plan design is 485 and 1182, okay? If there's no rate increase, and at this point, I would assume, I mean, I don't think there will be, we still have some proposals we're waiting for, but there's virtually no increase and potentially a small decrease on the stop loss. So that, that's going to hinge on where these rates will end up being ultimately. But with no rate increase and assuming, I mean, it looks like there's not going to be one, then these would be our two plan option changes. Plan options that you could choose from, you could actually choose both if you like. So those being a very simple high deductible option, a $2,000 deductible. We've put this particular plan design in quite a few different employers in Alabama. It's keeping a richer plan and then going to a high deductible with copays, and you can also go a high deductible, again, without any copays, and so those are the two options that we're talking about. So again, if, under option one, there would be a nice decrease, it's something, and I think, let's see, down here at the bottom, option one is a 26.4% decrease over the current rates of 485 and 1182, and option two is a 32.7% decrease, and that again would be no RX copays. So everything would go towards the deductible, of course, on option two, and you would have a copay option for option one, for generics preferred and then non-preferred, so 15, 60, and 100.
Jim, are those options one and two, are those no-cost plans?
I'm not sure.
To the employee?
No-cost plans, yes, exactly. So what we had talked about, thank you, Jack, so what we had talked about in several meetings prior to the work session today is, is at a point, which could be October the 1st at renewal, we had talked about possibly doing this prior to renewal, but now it probably would be renewal, I suppose, would be to offer one of these options at a no-cost to the employee, and then they could buy up to the current plan design. That is an option. Again, that's, it was, I was waiting for, you know, direction from the council to decide on what you guys wanted to do. But yes, there's, there's a few different ways to do this. We have, I know you guys are looking to save some money, obviously, and a nice way to do that would be to offer a base plan at no cost, and then going forward to new employees or potentially their current employee base, is to offer, you know, a buy-up. And most employers that we deal with on a self-insured basis have two options, and they do have a buy-up. So they will have a lower plan option like what we're proposing here, and then they, and they usually keep that either no-cost to the employee or a very small fee, and then obviously a pretty decent 20% to 30% increase for the current base plan that we're referring to.
What would the out-of-pocket max be on these two different options?
Yeah, what we're doing on these, and I'm sorry I didn't put any more detail, but it's simply, the reason is, it's 100% plan after the deductible, so the out-of-pocket's 2,000, single 4,000, family. I could've put that in, apologize about that, but it's, once you hit the deductible, there's no other out-of-pocket for the year. There's an interesting statistic with, that Blue Cross published a few years ago, in that most, and this is, let me just say this, this is all Alabama employers, that of the Alabama employers, 80% of those employees do not reach $2,000 a year in total benefits as far as what's paid out on them. So we have used somewhere between 25 and 20, I mean, $1,500 and $2,500 deductibles very successfully, and we actually, even with these type discounts, we see these running better than these funding rates in a lot of instances. But somewhere 25% to 35% is about where they land on other employers, to give you an idea. So the 25%, the $2,000 deductibles is very, very effective, it's kind of a sweet spot, and again, a lot of our clients have this type option.
And can that be tailored?
Yes, of course.
You can make that deductible whatever.
Anything, yeah. This is just a, kind of a, just a working number.
Sure.
Yeah, yes, sir, absolutely, Jack.
Because you think, you look at that number, it looks large, because we've been looking at, say, monthly premiums, but that's less than $200 a month.
Right. Yeah, it's a, it's a difference of about $100 per employee and somewhere around $250 per family. And so it's a pretty decent number there, I mean, as far as savings on plan one. But yes, if we wanted to change the deductible to a different number, it doesn't take but a couple of days to generate those new rates. And if we, with this, with this high deductible, you would have a wellness benefit that's covered at 100%. Of course, that's ACA compliant, I mean, all these plans are, so you would have to have those portions in here. Now, I can give a full detailed plan here. I was, when I put this together, I just wanted to show you, hey, this is a base plan we have in a lot of our, a lot of our client bases. And again, it's just to kind of show you that the savings that could be generated with this type of deductible, but sure, we can do anything there that you like. Since they're not going to be HSA compliant, excuse me, since, my understanding is, and this could change too, if you want it to be HSA compliant, then we can modify it, but if it's not going to be, and what HSA is, it's just a health spending account that the employee can contribute to tax-free. It's kind of like cafeteria plan or flexible spending account, if you guys are familiar with those, but you don't lose the dollars. I mean, they continue to roll over. You can take an IRA and roll it into this, to an HSA compliant plan, and that's a pretty slick way to do it. You could have a, you know, an IRA that, that again, if you fold that money in, you could still invest those dollars, it's limited, in that HSA IRA, but you still can do that. So there's some neat options within that, but if you don't want to make it HSA compliant, then at that point, we can do all kinds of other things, such as different copays and so forth, because typically, you cannot provide copays unless it's just for a maintenance medication under an HSA compliant plan, but you can provide copays for maintenance medications. Any questions on this? Again, I could go into a lot more detail, I just, I didn't, I was thinking I had like 15 or 20 minutes here, guys, so.
So the 2,000 would be family or individual?
Families, two times that, so.
4,000.
It's four, yeah, it's two and four, yes.
Let me ask a question on the HSA. That's basically, you're putting money aside for future?
Yes.
A billion? You don't have to pay, in other words, it comes out of that account as opposed to your pocket at that point.
Right. So say you wanted to, the limits this year are like $3,600 for a single that you could put in tax-free, and $7,200 or $7,250 or $7,400 for family. You can put that aside. And again, you can roll monies in from an IRA if you like.
Does that come out pre-tax?
That's all pre-tax, yeah. So you can then turn around, as long as the money's in there, it's different than a flexible spending account where it's immediately available. So the money has to be there, but then say you go to, if you had a high deductible plan and you put in just $100, which again is the difference in the premium, okay? I think it's a great idea, because hey, you're going to spend it in premium, or you can have $1,200 sitting there at the end of the year if you don't access it, and that's your money that you can then, you know, use for future out-of-pockets. But let's just say you had $300 in your account, and you went to the doctor, and it was, it wasn't your wellness visit, it was something else, and the doctor visit was $125. Well, you could access it with a debit card, and it would take it right, the $125 would take right out of your account, leaving from 300, leave 175 in there. So as soon as the money's there, it doesn't have to be in future years, it can be immediate as soon as the money's there, you can access it.
Same future as far as it rolls over, so in case, let's say you're healthy all year for two years.
Sure.
That might just roll over to the third year.
Right. Yeah, so, yes, sir. So the idea is, and this is a really effective way to manage this HSA, and if you, you have a $2,000 deductible, if you just, you had very small bills for the first couple of years, and you ended up having $2,000 in there, at that point forward, I mean, you basically have 100% plan from that point forward. You have a $2,000 deductible, but it had $2,000 in my HSA account, I mean, assuming that you had a really bad year the next year, it sends you up to 2,000, of course, that person would have 100% plan the rest of the year. So that's the advantage of that HSA. And again, you can't lose the money. Once it hits a certain dollar amount, and I think it's 2,500, then at that point, it becomes an investable vehicle. And then there's some limited options, but it's still, you know, can provide some return. And then it's, and it's there until you retire, and then some people use it as a savings vehicle and just keep up with all their receipts, and then sometime down the road, in years, down the road, they can take those receipts and cash it in and not pay tax on that. So that's a little five-minute information on the HSAs. But I can give you guys a lot more detail on that, in written detail, on all the options under the HSA if you like. But we really like it, we have a lot of our groups that participate in those. Any more questions on the plan design? Again, I can get a lot more detail full-blown, I've got your current plan here. But again, I was, I thought I was lending to time, I just didn't get a lot of detail. We just want to make sure you had the rates and the basic idea.
I guess it's just optics, we can ask you to tailor it however we want you to tailor it.
Absolutely. Yeah, and I just need a few days to do that.
And if you, or if we wanted to keep it the same, I'll ask you to ask the same of the prior presentation, if we want to keep our existing employees in the current plan and provide these other options for future employees, no problem, right?
Absolutely. And we had talked about several different things in different meetings we've had with mayor and several council people at different times, and that was, you know, cost measures on plan design, and then how do we want to fund this as far as are we going to continue to pay 100% for both single and family? And the school of thought from what we took away from those meetings is, you know, this is the year where we want to, at least, if nothing else, new employees coming in would have the option of a different plan and would be paying for the first time if they took the richer of the two plans. I mean, that was the direction that we got from those few meetings that we were with. But again, if that has changed, I mean, it's, the plans ran well this year. I don't anticipate any rate increase, I actually anticipate the fixed costs decreasing some. That's what we have so far from our markets. But, you know, 80% of your cost is claims-based, so only about 10%, 10% or 12% or so is your stop loss. So then, and the other is Blue Cross's admin fee. So 80-plus percent is all claims, and it's run, it's run better and ran well, so. Any, but thanks for those plans, any other plan design questions? I just want to make sure I definitely address those, but ultimately, if you guys want to tweak this, no problem, I can continue to give you guys some ideas on that. It's very common that we run literally a half a dozen different scenarios, and what would this do, what would that do? It only takes a few days, and again, this is a pretty common plan that we have with quite a few clients.
Any questions for Jim?
Okay. All right, let's, let me just kind of go through some things that we have done in the local community, clients of ours that are local, that we all took self-insured over different periods of time over the last 10 years or so. This was requested of us sometime in the last 12 months, and we ended up putting this together, which is just, and we can do this for other parts of the state, we just decided to keep this local, but we can do benchmarking from any, you know, from a regional standpoint, local standpoint, state, whatever you guys like to do. But this is kind of more or less what this is. I mean, we, you know, from an employer municipality standpoint, you wanted to, you want to be able to maintain your employee base and recruit, and why, the reason you even offer employee benefits at all is for that reason. benefits at all is for that reason. So recruitment and retainment of your employees. You guys, of course, your plan design's here on the left, then we have Baybonets and Foley and Gulf Shores and Riviera. We also are working with several other ones, and we just don't have them on this list. They're also local municipalities. So you can see that your plan design, if we can just start with the copays, it's a 35 and 50, and then you can go across here, and, you know, it's, it's all similar. I mean, you guys do have a specialty copay that's higher than the other ones, but these other plans are all grandfathered, and I believe you guys know that you guys are not. And that happened not on our watch, but when Blue Cross had you guys on a fully insured arrangement. But since that period of time, that's the reason that we've changed some of the plan designs here. And coming on down, your deductible is right in line, it's a 300 and 900. You do have an individual high, this is the annual max, and this was something the prior administration decided to do, 6,350 and $12,700. Now, let me explain that, and our recommendation is to lower those two numbers, even with the rich plan, down to 25 and 4,000. And the reason that is, is the majority of your claims are under those two numbers. Right now, what's going on is, with a non-grandfathered plan, all of the copays and the deductible go to satisfy the out-of-pocket. And once the out-of-pocket is met, then it's 100% plan after that. Well, I think it was a conservative, I remember the conversation very well, last year at this time, and once we changed this, I mean, it was a situation where they wanted to know what the max was, and I said, well, the max is this number. And the decision was to go with the max because of the unforeseen liability. It's not a realistic liability, but once the out-of-pocket is met, again, it's 100% plan to that employee. And, but most of those claims that you guys have out-of-pocket-wise do not, do not even get close to those maximums there. So I think it's a misnomer, or it's a, what's the word I'm looking for? I think it should be reflective of truly what about the break-even out-of-pocket is, and still without putting an additional liability on the city, and that's a good bit lower number. So we can work with that, and I can show you a couple of ideas there. But again, 2,000, 4,000 is a good number, and it just, it will fit well, and not, and therefore, the 6,350 and the 12,700, those, again, those weren't our recommendations, that was, that was what was put in by the prior administration. But again, based off of what the highest number was, that's what they decided to go with. And then, but prior to that, it was a much lower number, and I can get what that was prior to, but it did need an increase, it just didn't need to be that much. The ER is 200 per, per visit, $200 copay. Year-end payments, 250 per admits, and you can see the rest of it there. So my point being is, you guys are very, have very similar plans, except that you guys are non-grandfathered, and that's what's pushed your out-of-pocket this high. And you can see the other ones are very low, and they're all because the grandfathered plans don't have the same stipulation where the copays go to satisfy the out-of-pocket max, and that's why they're so low.
At this point, if, so if we're not grandfathered, it won't, it won't hurt us to make adjustments and?
No, not at all. Nope.
If it were, then?
Then there's, then you would have.
Then that triggers you.
Right, then it triggers that, hey, we have to have a higher out-of-pocket. Say if you were going, if you were looking at this, saying, well, heck, we have such a low out-of-pocket, what do we do? And I said, well, for this plan, you can't do a lot. We need to offer a second plan for sure, okay? And that is because you don't want to give up your grandfather status unless you just need to or want to. Now, there's plenty of employers that knew exactly what they were doing, like, I don't care anything else about it. And then the out-of-pocket, the copay satisfying the out-of-pocket did not get implemented until like 2014, that's when that happened. So all the, all our self-insured clients were like, well, why aren't we keeping this grandfather status? Why are we keeping it? Well, at this point, we think something's coming, where we're not sure, but, so no one was informed about it from the government until 2014. So healthcare reform went out in 2010, if you, if you guys didn't remember the date there. So for four years, you know, being grandfathered was, okay, well, we're going to do it because you guys are recommending us doing it, but we're not sure why. And again, it's really tough to keep it because you've got to have, you know, your copays can't get increased more than $5, your percentage just can't increase more than 5%. And you guys aren't under that restriction anymore, as you know.
You've got about seven minutes.
Seven minutes to go, okay. All right, I'm going to flip to, but anyway, some benchmarking, local benchmarking. Again, we can go as far out of that as you want, meaning we can go regional or state or southeast or whatever. I want to go to this, and then I'll probably, and that will probably limit me on my time, and that is just the one that's non-bound. I want to touch on that. Before I do that, there's one thing that I want to point out, and that is how well your plan has run this year compared to prior years. And I'm sorry I don't have this handout, but your stop-loss claims historically have been, you know, three, four, $500,000, so $300,000, $400,000, $500,000 consistently over the last four or five years. And this year, and this is through, I don't have the June information, but through May, we have $16,778,000. So 16,000 compared to 200,000, that's why we're getting, you know, a discounted stop-loss removal over the current. So that's not completely finished yet, but it will be below a little bit of what we're paying now, which is great. But again, if these would have been inflated at 300,000 or 400,000, I'd probably be looking at an increase, but it's run really well, quite well, and we're looking at somewhat of a decrease. And it could be more than that, I just don't have all of my numbers in yet. So we will, and I haven't worked my magic either, so, and that is heads to the desk for the underwriter, so that's what I.
At the risk of a HIPAA violation, I want to thank Kevin for paying out of the hospital this year.
Just an estimate, just an estimate, I was just guessing, I don't know. Well, I want to now flip to this first page, and I haven't left myself a lot of time on our, on our services. But the one thing I do want to stress is our client resource team, which is a group of seven attorneys that sit with us, that all they handle are employee, employer-related, you know, HR, HIPAA, of course, related situations. Also, let me just kind of read off this, because I'm going to, I'm kind of getting off track. But anyway, we have seven attorneys that are with us that can help from anything, from conducting a handbook review to employer, HR, practice assessments. We offer literally an onsite review of 10, of, what is the, of the I9s, pardon me. We also help with guidance on family medical leave and workers' compensation, ADA, ERISA, COBRA. Anyway, there's, these guys are tremendous help to us. We lean on them for all kinds of situations. Anyway, that's our client resource team. And there's a lot more data here, I just kind of hit some of the highlights. The analytics, we do a complete evaluation of your benefit plans on an annual basis, experience reporting and vendor management. Anyway, just some few other highlights there. I won't hit them all, I'm sorry, I've kind of ran over my time a little bit. I did want to go over to page four, we've kind of talked about plan design. Advanced analytics makes it easy to monitor popular, to population health, identify cost drivers, and model plan designs to control benefit cost. Just, again, we do, we have a team that does nothing but advanced analytics on your claims to kind of really push down what you guys may want to consider. So it's not just myself, but we have a team doing that as well. We had talked about spousal carve-outs, another way to reduce cost. And since you guys pay 100% of the family, this is on page five, it's, it could be a nice cost reduction for any family member that has coverage outside, that's working and has offered coverage, that they have to, they have to leave the plan. So, or pay an additional premium to stay on the plan. So that's something that's very effective, especially with a plan like you guys, that you're paying 100% of the family cost. So something we will totally facilitate, help with all of that, show you exactly what to do. We've done it for quite a few different employers over the years. So going on to, one of the last things I want to discuss is, because we had talked about this back and forth, and we can set up a separate meeting to discuss this, but an onsite clinic, whether it's done with an outside firm or a local group of docs. What we found is that we've used a local firm, Atamobile, by the name of Symbol, and this is on page six, and we've set them up for, we set them up for Foley, we also set it up for Gulf Shores and for Orange Beach. So where the Symbol clinic was utilized by all three different employers, and there's three separate clinics, but an employee from Foley could go over to Orange Beach, Orange Beach could go to Gulf Shores and vice versa. That same kind of program can work here. So we're close to having a Symbol clinic housed over here in Fairhope, or very near Fairhope. Riviera Utilities is wanting to do this for a long time, but of course, they have a location just up the road in Daphne, and they would want something, of course, over here as opposed to just down on the south end of the county. So we really like Symbol Clinic. Anyway, onsite clinic for you guys that are not familiar with that, the employees go, there's no cost for that, anytime that they go, there's no cost, no copay, there's no cost for the medications. It gets them that much more compliant or completely compliant for somebody that has diabetes or high blood pressure. There's often, when they're, when they've go through their initial testing with Symbol, they're doing blood work and that sort of thing, and high blood pressure readings. If there's people with high blood pressure and diabetes and they don't even realize it, we actually had a gentleman in one of the cities south of here that was in real critical shape and ended up having to have bypass surgery based off of his initial reading within a few days after this. So potentially life-saving due to just having an onsite clinic and having, having care that is free to those employees. It's their number-one best benefit that they have, and something that you guys would have a return of investment on, and we'd be happy to go through a full presentation if you guys would like to do that. Again, the last thing is our client resource team, and just all the things they do, again, all the ACA guidance and compliance work that they do, reviewing, you know, your handbooks and helping actually change those if some of those are out of date. So those are some things that we do for a lot of our employers. Anyway, I want to wrap up, if, I'm sorry if I've gone over. We have, the last page is just some of the things that we've done for you guys. There is a very detailed, like a 30-page presentation here that goes through a lot of our services, and if you guys feel free to look at that. I just wanted to say thanks again for your time and for the opportunity to serve the city of Fairhope. I hope that we have proven ourselves to be a good consultant for you guys. Again, we're trusted with a lot of employers throughout the state. In closing, I will say that our team, over the course of 20-plus years, have taken more group self-insured than any other consultant or broker in the state. And again, those are state, without them, employers. So we have, we've done, I hope, a nice service to those employers. And again, wanted to say thank you for your time.
Any final questions for Jim? Anyone?
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Yeah, pleasure. Thank you, guys.
Counsel, we are running short on time, but does anybody have anything related to this healthcare coverage plan that they want to stress at this time, if you have, you know, a strong opinion about something you would like to see in the plan? Should we need to go back to a consultant and ask them for numbers on A, B, C, or D? For instance, I would really, you know, I'd like to ask the council to consider whatever other options they choose to consider, and so that savings won't be what's projected in any of these, but I would like to seriously consider not changing the plans that we, or actually, not changing drastically what we have for our current employees. We could change those out-of-pocket maximums, we could lower them. And there may be a little bit of the RX deductibles we could mess with, but other than that, I'd kind of like to keep those.
I think the RX, it would be the biggest savings. I do think that in our HR department, offering vision and dental at the time of health, even if it's an option, would be a lot more convenient to have it all done at that point. Either one of them can do that.
Okay, all right, good to know.
So it's not just, here it is, good luck.
Right, good.
Yeah, I would agree with the, trying to leave some type of grandfathered plan in place. I think anything moving forward, certainly people are going to need to chip in and pay some premium, but if you, if you pass that along to existing employees, it's kind of a pay cut of sorts. It's already part of their benefit package, so I'd hate to take anything away from them.
Right. Well, that last, the presentation had, those were no-premium plans that were proposed, they were just, they just had deductibles just.
Right, we're just, same as the prior plan proposal.
Well, if you don't ever go to the doctor, say if nobody in your family goes all year, you have no out-of-pocket cost for the entire year, as opposed to paying a monthly premium.
Incentivized, at least, checkup.
Yeah, and sometimes not a good thing, because if somebody's trying to save money and go, you know, and don't want to go to the doctor and take care of themselves, ultimately there's a catastrophic event and can lead to, but I'll think, I think though that plan was wellness covered at 100%, though.
Preventative maintenance.
Preventative was covered 100%.
I think it was incentivized, or we could incentivize.
I think they both can do essentially the same thing. I mean, they'll tailor it to whatever we want, it's basically, who do we think will work with us the best to get us to create that plan that we need?
I think that's what it comes down to as well. I think they're basically.
They're both going to Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Yeah, but, yeah, our employees are going to, you know, they want to know what kind of health insurance do I have? And I think it's going to be Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
Yeah, it'd definitely be Blue Cross, Blue Shield.
That's where most of the issues arise. I hate to, you know, water down the consultant's role, but it really comes down to, you know, the healthcare provider and the insurance provider as well.
And what's it going to cost you?
And what's it going to cost you? That's what they want to know. They don't, they probably don't even know who the consultant is, nor do they care.
I think that Cobb's did come to the table with some other options that I think would be important for HR department. And I guess both can do that, but I just know that they're real responsive.
They certainly did, although Mr. Ryan didn't cover it much, but in the, in this last thing he covered, he just kind of brushed over it there on the, one of the next-to-last pages, I believe, or maybe third or fourth, third page from the last. HR practice assessments, HR guidance, and our general employee issues, policy questions. I mean, just kind of brushed through that bullet, but.
The RX also with Cobb's, they suggested it would be just as good coverage with a different company that would save a lot as well. So I think that they kind of looked at a lot of these statistics, and they were able to drill down on very specific things that can give us better savings, better quality, and the options that they brought, even if you grandfathered in, I think, offering free, and then a little bit of a premium for four different options. It's not just family and single. They have a single parent with kids, or just a husband and a wife. kids, or just a husband and a wife. They had like four different, and I know they can offer it too, but I, anyway, I, I just liked the options that they brought to the table.
So, how do we, how do we wrap this up, I guess? How do we decide who we want to choose? And I think that, I know, we're not going to vote on it tonight, but I do think that if there are plan options you'd like to see, I think, you know, you might want to, you know, let Lisa know, and then we can let them know. But I think that, and at the next council meeting, we need to be very, very close to, to choosing someone.
I would almost even say they can both offer the exact same plan options. I think we just need, maybe at the next council meeting, to try to pick one and then go forward from there on the plan options we, we want to see.
Yeah, I think both can do whatever we give them to do. I mean, we just have to tell either, this is the option we want, this is the plan we want, show us what those options are.
And what I'm saying right now, if you want to tell, if anybody wants to, you know, be precise about what they'd like to see, you know, you can say it now.
I'd like to see, you know, employees that, after a certain date, you have to pay a, a small percentage into it. I like the point that Regent's made, where if your spouse has an availability insurance where she's employed, she's got to take it. She can't be a rider on the city as well.
They, they offered that to Cobb. I mean, they can offer that. They were trying to do something that was competitive with what other municipalities are doing in Baldwin County. But I do think, just from my personal, and I sat through three presentations each, that I, I didn't have to, I did ask a lot of questions, but a lot more information was given with options with Cobb's. So.
One thing I did notice, though, as well, is, and Cobb's mentioned it, was that they probably would like to know, you know, they gave some options and it showed the potential savings. And, and once again, if we, if we have a grandfather clause in there, we're not going to see those savings. Those would be if everybody participated. And Regent's had the savings with their options as well. So, we, we can give them a number. It seems, what I'm looking for, it doesn't seem right when you say, well, we're doing it to save money. We should be doing it for the benefit of our employees.
I think it's better quality.
But we'd be fooling ourselves if we're not just, if we, if we weren't trying to save money, then why would we change what we have? Why would we even consider?
I think we're going to make the, all the programs better, because the out-of-pocket is not going to be so high. And I think that's really what would affect, if something catastrophic happened.
Well, I'm saying that if we didn't have in the back of our mind, we're trying to save money, we would only look at what we have right now and change it. That would be it. So, keep that in mind. Can I ask Lisa to be a clearinghouse for that, unless you want to say? Anybody else have any specifics? All right, let's, let's move on. Discussion of police jurisdiction. Quickly, the reason that we put this on the agenda tonight was that the Baldwin County Commissioners are looking to adopt their budget for the next fiscal year, and they would like to know what City of Fairhope's intentions are in regards to our police jurisdiction, because this does affect their budgeting and, you know, how much of the sheriff's department's resources need to be committed to what is currently our police jurisdiction. Mary, did you have some information to present on this?
Well, I do have some. Basically, with the budget that we had in 2000, for the fiscal 2017, was about $6 million. And the amount of that budget that comes from outside the city limits is the license fees, the lodging, and 1%, or part of the 1% sales tax. And last year, it was about 1.2 million. And we are, through May, for fiscal 2017, we're about $800,000 at the end of May. So, we're, we're trending on about the same amount, if not a little bit more, but our sales taxes going up for inside the city limits, too. So, the lion's share of the funding for the police jurisdiction, or inside the city limits, is paying the most of that. I didn't know that I was going to be talking about this tonight, but I can try to give you more information.
Well, I thought that I had read that you had something to prepare in your email to Commissioner Elliott, so I thought you may, and I just want to give you that opportunity.
You know, I, I can say that the geography of the police jurisdiction, you know, what, what is inside the city limits is about 1/3 of that. So, we are spending, and I'll find the statistics that Lieutenant Hamrick put together, which is good. But I'll have this to present, of course, in a lot better detail. But one of the things to consider also, when I discussed this at the beginning of the year, they said that the county would need to know something by October 1st. So, this is a big decision, and something that needs to be citizen-engaged, and through, I think, a lot of conversations. But where we are today is, we have a police jurisdiction that is not sustainable financially. We have to have more coming in to help pay for the police that we have. We don't have enough police personnel to, to just take care of inside the city limits right now. And we have the census information that came in a few days ago, and we're over 19,000 now, inside the city limits. So, we would have to almost double that personnel to take care of our whole jurisdiction that's in place right now. So, it is a conversation that has to start this year. I doubt we can make a decision by October 1st, but when you do make that decision, October 1st, for the county, they have a full year to, you know, put that together, put up the staffing, and then it's the next October 1st that that takes place. So, if we wait until next year to make that decision, and get more input from citizens, and look at really everything that I'm looking at now for funding, then you're looking at 2019. But it doesn't have to be coming in just for inside the city limits. You could look at, right now, just bringing in some, because some parts would be easier for county to start taking care of if you did just came in just a little bit. That could be, you know, something to discuss this year.
Can we say that it's two miles as opposed to, I think you have the mile and a half and the three mile?
Right.
I don't know if you can, can you have an in-between distance? And also, can you, can you cherry pick where you want that to occur?
Yeah, for example, like the, the Grand Hotel, I mean, we've received lodging tax from the Grand Hotel. If they were pulled back from outside of the city limits, or outside of the police jurisdiction, we wouldn't see that.
One of the reasons why you're, you're doing this also is, like I said, when you look at the funding, I'm just looking at a full-year 1.2 million, and we're looking at about $6 million to take care of that department, and we have a lot more needs. It's understaffed right now. We have to bring more people in, and we have to do that by incentivizing, you know, and hoping that, you know, people will pay more for those benefits. Because right now, what is being paid for is not the same as what's being paid for inside the city limits. And when you do that, you look at an area, maybe say, this is what we want for the next two years, and then it expands from there. But it, it has to be, we have to put together a distinct benefit package of pros and cons of living inside the city limits. And you do that not just to sustain our city, but it's also to help us grow in a, in a way that we can control.
I, I worry about pulling it back, and even though, you know, it's 1.2 million, roughly, I had, I had been told once, and I'd like to know, I'd heard that the Grand Hotel alone contributes close to that. But I'll use your number, 1.2. If we do pull back to the, to the city limits, well, we, or some other, we, whatever we lose is even less money to pay additional police. So, if we were to lose 1.2 million, if it's hard to make budget now, it's going to be even harder. And, and understand, what you're saying is, is that if we deny the people that are in the PJ right now, that not in the city limits, these services, that they will annex into the city, is essentially what you're saying, and that we would recover their property taxes.
It's not just the money, though. It's the time and expense that I'm not even getting into. The time and expense is way more than that 1.2 that's contributing, because it's about, like I said, half of the population outside the city limits. So, I don't have all that to give, because I want, I want to do this in a presentation where we really do have all the data. But the time and expense it is taking our police to patrol and to take care of outside the city limits, that is where it's a drain, not the small amount of income that we get from these things. So, and, and like I said, Lieutenant Hamrick did put together a, some good statistics.
I'd be interested maybe seeing what, what would the interim be there, because if you take that income away, then, like I said, I mean, we're not going to reduce the police force any.
Like I said, the expense goes down a lot more. It's the expense that goes down significantly.
What about the argument saying, with the extended police jurisdiction, you're keeping the crime pushed away from city property?
Right. Like I said, it's a conversation, and you do it in stages, basically talking to citizens to let them know, this is what it's costing. The city runs at a deficit. That does have to be fixed. Police is our, our most expensive department within the city, and we want it to be fully staffed, first and foremost, for the people that are paying for it, the lion's share of it. And we do need to increase staff right now. When you have a staff of what we have for the police, and it's providing services for a huge area, the people that are paying for it are not getting the services that they're paying for, and that growth is just increasing outside. So, yes, those things need to be addressed, but people have a choice to come in and participate, pay for those services, and, and receive those services. And as elected officials, we do have to make decisions for our constituents, and those are the ones right now that are paying for it. Like I said, it's, it's not going to be a super-popular thing to talk about, but it is something that we have to plan for, because not doing so, that's the part that is really draining our police department in a big way.
I'm, I'm still worried about the fact that we just lose the Grand Hotel alone, the, the, even if they're paying only half, even if they're only paying the one penny sales tax and half the lodging tax, that, that alone is, could be devastating to our, to our budget, because.
But we're not saying that that, that won't happen. We are, we want to set it up so it's easy and beneficial to come inside the city. And if we don't show a difference, then nothing will ever change. So, it, it might not be exercising right now inside the city limits, but October 1st, we can say, this is an area that we've defined as the first step. So, we can, otherwise, we're going to have to hire and, and staff our police department a lot more than what it is right now.
Is there a way to track, like, the percentage of time spent in outside?
We have it. Yeah.
There's another issue as far as coming into the city, not coming to the city. First, the Steelwood subdivision's 3 and 1/2 miles out. If they want to come in today, they can't.
Right. That's why I said it has to be a plan.
In essence, you're kind of penalizing the subject that unless they grow literally from inside to out, you can't, they can't come in the city, no matter what they want to do. Because you have to be
It has to be, we want to look at what we have and fill in the holes, and do it in a planned way, so it's easy and it makes sense for this is the first year. But we do have some things that are kind of, when you look at inside the city limits, I mean, you do have some areas that it, it doesn't make sense right now. But it, like I said, it's, it's something that we really need to talk about in a serious way, because one of the most important reasons why, we absolutely need it to be financially sustainable, but the most important reason is because by doing so, we can implement and enforce responsible growth. And that's priceless. And that's the number-one concern that everybody has right now. And we need to do it, like I said, so it's, it's very, very, very good for everybody that, that wants to come in. The list of benefits needs to be, when you look at it, what's the catch? The benefits are so good that, yes, we all need to participate. And, because we all do want the same things.
I have just one more question, and I don't, I don't know the answer. And Mr. Peterson, you may, you may or may not know the answer to this. Right now, Mr. McCrory, you or Mr. Rum actually may know the answer to this. Now, when we charge for our Fairhope utilities outside of our city limits, we charge higher rates than we charge inside the city limits. Is that contingent upon providing them protections such as police as well? Because if we pull it back, that's a big factor that has to be looked at, that, that nobody's giving me the numbers on that. I mean, how much income is lost in that, or can we still continue to, and Joe, let me leave you out there? And, and, or is that something we can continue to do? If we pull our police back to the city limits, can we continue to charge a higher rate for people outside of city limits?
We're doing it currently at the border, because our border goes over the fish river, all the way across the river. There's a difference in.
It's not just police, though. I mean, there's other services that people, that this pays for. And it's, it's slightly, I mean, we can look at the difference. It's not, it's not paying for police, but there's a lot more benefits than just police, that our services, I mean, it's our infrastructure, it's our schools.
I understand. But that's enough. And, and your answer kind of answers my question somewhat. If we're going all the way outside the PJ, and what we're still charging more, maybe that, it's not tied. I just don't know if it's tied.
I have.
Mary, do you know the planning jurisdiction, or Wayne, the planning jurisdiction, is it congruent with the police jurisdiction, or can they be different?
The current planning jurisdiction goes, it's a large geographic area. It's tremendous, really. That can be withdrawn, takes, takes an agreement with, with the county. Fairup has an agreement they've had for a number of years for the current boundaries, and that has to be agreed upon. It's a little different from the police jurisdiction, because that, that can be, it can, can go no further than five miles, but it can come in if, if that was the council's decision to do that. But in that planning jurisdiction, it's reviewing of subdivisions only, so it doesn't, there's no police or anything, it's just, just for subdivision reviews, and, and gives the, the authority to the city to have, to review subdivisions in those areas. It gets a dual review in the planning jurisdiction. The county reviews it internally, administratively, and then it comes to the city planning commission for a public hearing for any kind of subdivision approval. But that, but that's a little more negotiable, I think. There's some new law that was passed a couple of years ago that, that also has some, has some new language regarding the planning jurisdiction as well.
I have some statistics from January 2016 to June 28th, 2017. So, inside the city limits, let's see, like, city limits, felony arrests, 646. Felony arrests in the jurisdiction is 323. Misdemeanor arrests, 1442. I can send this to you. And then in the jurisdiction, 614. I mean, it's five categories, but anyway, the total reports in the jurisdiction, in the city limits is 2,772, and then total outside the city limits is 1,124. So, it's about 40%, a little over 40% of these occurrences are happening outside the city limits. So, it's the offense and time that those cases take that is really outweighs the income.
We have to factor the income to the courts in that as well.
Yep. But just like I said, it's all, you take all of that in consideration when you do your plan.
So, are we not going to be able to do this prior to their passing their budget then, this year? Is that right? Is that right?
No, unless we do something small. I mean, a small change that made sense.
Counsel, what should we tell Baldwin County Commission?
That we don't have a decision?
I don't think it's, it's not something we could discuss right now. We would want to have all the statistics and I can do a presentation for even a special meeting with the police representative, Jennifer Olmstead, who put the income information together and look at the map right now that makes up the police jurisdiction. But I do think even coming in a little could make a big difference because it's big.
Any other comments? Nobody? Okay. All right, let's, we'll get to the budget discussions. We'll have to have a special meeting, probably a couple of hours in the next couple of weeks to get caught back up on that. Jill actually had proposed that and due to busy schedules, we couldn't put it on in the last two weeks, but we will have to make that up in the next two weeks. So we will adjourn and let's try to, let's take a five-minute break and then I might start the meeting.